Good evening. Sorry we started a little bit late. Our executive session ran by a little bit late, but welcome tonight. Seeing the time is upon us and we have a quorum. We'd like to open the meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hanow?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Present.
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Mr. Carlin?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mrs. Gaines?
She's absent.
Mrs. Sylvia?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very sadly, this portion of the night is upon us pretty harshly in this small little community over the past thirty some odd days, and it is the moment of silence. We'd like to keep the following members in our thoughts and prayers. Those who have passed away since our last meeting. Lenny Murphy, retired Rogers High School educator. Eileen McGreevy, aunt of June McGreevy, Rogers High School. Patricia Kalis, cousin of Sheila Diasentis, Pell Para-educator. Jonathan Spinney, cousin to Patricia Lentz, RHS Secretary. Noel Bennett, grandfather of Maria Tavarrazio, RHS teacher. Carmen Ripa, uncle of Julie Pinto, Pell Para-educator. Maria Ventura, aunt of Ada Lavasia, RHS Secretary. William Holden, brother-in-law of Linda Matoza, Rogers High School counselor. Robert Johnson, grandfather of Nicole Cardoza, Pell teacher. Julius Borges, grandfather of Jennifer Borges, Pell teacher. Mary Garcia Cooper, sister of Vicki Lynch, Pell Para-educator. Mackenzie Lino, a 2017 Rogers High School graduate. And most recently, just after Mackenzie, was Mr. Jamie Crowley, the currently Rogers High School Assistant Principal and Thompson Middle School Principal. A moment of silence, please. The next order of business would be the, members of the school Subcommittee will be appointed tonight. Additional representatives to the Subcommittee will be appointed per Ride Rhode Island Department of Education School Construction Regulations with recommendations from the city. Additional representatives to the Subcommittee will be appointed after consultation with the city. We need local official responsible for building maintenance and representative of body authorized by law to construct school buildings in the municipality. But we have Dotzy Bohan, Rebecca Boland, Carly Cezarini, Dean Chase, Carlos Colley, Jack Enright, Michael Finn, Connor Gavin, Julianne Gavin, Jack Grant, Isabel Griffith, Adrian Haylor, Joseph Hearn, Bridget Hol, Jennifer Hol, Michael Jenkins, Colleen Jermaine, Patrick Kelly, William Kynes, Kathy LaVigia, Spencer McComb, Kevin Machard, Kendra Munter, Brian Russell, Paul Sicilian, Kathleen Sylvia, Rosemary Slocum, Chuck Taylor, Jared Vance, Elizabeth Walker, Kelly Walker, and Barbara Winkler. I want to thank all of those folks that have offered to dedicate some time and volunteer on the Rogers High School Building Subcommittee. And we'll also be having people come and go, but we have to get a list of people to Ride as an official notification.
Do we need a motion on this?
Um, I guess we would need a motion technically.
Will the appointments be approved?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted, it's unanimous. Thank you. The next portion of the evening will be public comment. Ms. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. We have four individuals signed up for public comment. Latisha Michelle?
Okay, so during the public com- public comment, we have any person who's willing to desire to address the school committee concerning an issue that's not on the committee's docket shall complete their request prior to the start of the meeting. Please walk to the rostrum. After receiving recognition, state your name and proceed. Since your wish is not, since your issue's not on the agenda, the committee cannot really address you at this time. Your issue will be assigned to the appropriate department, and to be assured that your issue is fully understood, is advisable you have comments in writing. And you are permitted to speak for three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I can barely hear, but I'll try to speak as loud as I can.
Is it me?
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is that better? Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. So my name is Latisha Michelle. I'm a parent for two children at Thompson Junior High School. I came tonight to reference the email that I sent out earlier today. I know you guys did not get it. I know you can't answer all my questions, but it's in regards to suicide and bullying. My, one of my children, my fifth grader, has recently experienced that at Thompson. It was written twice on the bathroom wall that she should kill herself. So, um, tonight, I'm just here to ask the school committee what's in place year-round other than guidance and the Project Purple to address bullying and suicide. What is in place to help the families deal with children that are suicidal or become suicidal due to bullying? That's just to name a few of the questions that I do have. My hope is that we can address this matter as a community and that it will get on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, thank you very much, and sorry for those comments on the wall in the bathroom, but the superintendent will take this up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, yes. I went over and talked with you. That email was sent around six o'clock tonight, and I had eyes on it right before this meeting. So yes, we'll talk tomorrow morning.
Thank you for coming in and stepping up and saying something. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gianna Michelle?
Look at that Frankie, get our special mic. You're all right, Frank.
Thank you. Um... Shh, state her name.
I want to hear what you have to say, sweetie. Come on. No? You want me to read it? You want me to read that for you? All right. Well, if, if she wants to, she can come back up. No problem. If she wants to come up, she can come back up.
Devon O'Brien?
Good evening. My name is Devon O'Brien. I am a seventh grader at Thompson Middle School. I would just like to address a few issues to the committee. First of all, is the health and safety concerns at Rogers. We have, over the past month, heard reports of rats, rats and mold on the walls, puddles on the floor, broken ventilation, lead water, and closed bathrooms and undercooked food. As recently as twenty something years ago, my uncles went to school at Rogers, and they said they couldn't even keep their lunches in their lockers because the rats would eat it. I don't know why this place hasn't been condemned yet, but something needs to be done, and it needs to be done quickly. Because I'm going to Rogers in two years, and I can't see myself liv- going to school in those sorts of conditions. Another thing is the fact that staff such as lunch, lunch workers, crossing guards and pass, and Para-educators do not receive pensions or sick or unemployment for school vacations. That is unacceptable. They work hard, and they should, they should be paid the same as other workers. My final point is that the Thompson water fountains have been shut down for months on the second and third floors. I've not, we have not received an official explanation for this, but I asked my Para, and she thought, she chalked it up to being because kids were quote-unquote "clogging" the water fountains. I don't know how someone clogged a water fountain, but that's besides the point. But, so, say, if you were on the third floor, and even if you brought your own water to school, and you drunk, you drank all your water, you have to walk all the way down to the first floor, fill up your water, go back up, and, you know, and you're thirsty, and you've already drinking like a quarter of your, quarter of your water. So, that's unacceptable too, and, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Deborah Perez, and I'm a teacher at Equinix Island Christian Academy in Portsmouth, and I work in Newport as a sub when I can. I have no children of my own, but every time I step into a classroom, those kids become my kids. With the recent events in Florida, I have been thinking hard about school safety, and my concerns are as followed. I have in my hands a report published in 2016 by Rhode Island Schools, Law Enforcement, and Other Agencies called All Hazard Site Safety Survey Report. The purpose of this report was to help local law enforcement and schools have a standardized approach to conducting school safety assessments. Within this survey, questions such as of the following are addressed. Can the police access all parts of the campus by vehicle? Is there an access control device in place? Is access limited to the building during school hours by locking exterior doors? How many exterior doors remain unlocked from the outside during school hours? Can classroom doors be locked from the inside? Is there a surveillance system in place in the school? These are just a few of the many questions that are addressed in this survey. My question is, has Newport Public Schools reached out to local law enforcement to conduct a site risk or threat assessment survey for its school campuses? And if not, do they plan to in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is written on behalf of Gianna Michelle. To know that someone is hurting so badly that they are writing you should commit suicide, it hurts. Every day, you wonder, why me? You start to lose trust with people that were your friends. You feel like everyone hates you when they, when they're mean. It will never feel good, and that's my experience.
Thank you for writing that down, and know that you're loved, okay? We'll get to the bottom of that. That concludes the public comment section of the evening tonight. Next, we will have student activities, and Ajahnay Green is, is here tonight to fill us in on all the activities going on within the schools.
Hello. All right. Um, so, this isn't working. But for sports, the swimming, the swim team had a good season. They were undefeated, and they are division champions. And for girls' basketball team, they're also co-division champions, and they qualify for the open tournament that will be held next week. For track, the girls, Gianna, myself, are going to New England as well as Colton, and the four-by-four to compete. And Christina Copeland was a JV state champion. And recently, we had a candlelight for Mackenzie Lino, and Isaiah Branch has won the award for the historic, at the historical Black Assembly.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're getting to be quite a pro up here. All right, next would be item four, Resolutions and Certificates of Achievement. Four point one, we were asked, Mr. Goodburn wants us to push this off to the next meeting, which we will do at his request. The next thing we would like to do, and Mr. Gomes is gonna go up to the rostrum, but we would like to honor and recognize none other than Ms. Izzy Booth for achieving 1,000 point mark in a Rogers High School girls' basketball career. So Izzy, if you want to come up, Mr. Gomes has a certificate for you, and congratulations. Awesome job. That's quite the achievement. The next, the next order of business tonight would be four point three. I don't have anything in here. My, I don't have anything in my jacket. Oh, it's also be, it's actually being postponed to the next meeting as well. I'm sorry. That was recognition of a Newport Public School employee for a job well done. We'll move that to the March meeting. Action items, we're up to five point one, approval of the school calendar. I think there's a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to withdraw five point one at this time?
It's been a motion, it's been seconded by Ms. Flowers. Dr. Flowers, is there any discussion on that? All is in favor? Any opposed? So noted, that's withdrawn. The next meeting will be request for, the next one is a request for approval for educational facilities planning to be provided. The document is currently being reviewed by legal in the city to send out for RFP. Is there a motion?
Some, second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carlin?
Can you explain what the RFP, RFI for Educational Planner is?
Yes.
Or can the superintendent?
Yeah. Based upon the discussion we had back on January 12th of Rhode Island Department of Education, the educational planner is a very integral or most necessary piece to the puzzle if we are to have a candidate for the school actually to be replaced, which is Rogers High School, that the facility be designed based upon the educational needs for the next 20 years of the district. This particular piece of work can be done by someone who specializes or a company who specializes in this field. So this is actually one of the first pieces or the first persons or groups that we need to get on board to get the process going. Superintendent Jermaine, if I missed anything on that?
No, you've, you've said it perfectly. It's a time for the community, everyone to come together, have a discussion about our school system and what we'd like to see for the next 20 to 100 years.
Right. This, this is essentially for the, the educational needs of the district, not any architectural or building needs. It's basically the educational needs.
So this has absolutely nothing to do with the potential expansion of Pell School where we are tonight, or the replacement of Rogers High School, or the need to upgrade Rogers High School?
It has everything to do with it. We actually need this individual in order to put our application in. This person has to be on the team. It's a requirement from Ride.
So will this, will this award winner, when the school department issues an RFP, whoever is the eventual award winner, will the award winner be addressing facilities at all?
Yes, they will. The whole purpose and point of this is to look at the needs of the district based upon, and what's driving this is, one, at Pell Elementary School, we don't have enough room. Two, Rogers High School has deemed its needs to be replaced. And so, the person that will run and facilitate these meetings with community members and others will garner from the community what the community would like to see as far as facilities to meet the educational plans and curriculum for the district.
In March of 2016, this Newport School Committee, by a vote of five to two, and subsequently the Newport City Council by a vote of seven to nothing, approved an amendment to an existing contract which totaled $167,000 to evaluate all three of our schools and let us know what the facilities' needs are. Very similar, if not exactly, to what you just said, Superintendent Jermaine, regarding space needs, et cetera. The plan is readily available, I'm sure, by way of the Newport School Department or the Newport City Council to anybody who might be interested. But why have we, when we had this urgent need in March of 2016 from Ride to spend $167,000 on an evaluation of our three schools and the facilities' needs, among other things, why are we now apparently repeating that and spending additional money, putting what I think is the cart before the horse?
In the, in the RFP, if you see in the draft, Mr. Carlin, the things that this group is going to be looking at are curriculum goals, plans, and requirements, educational strategic plans, five-year strategic plan, demographic data and results, technology studies, best practices. They're looking more at what curriculum or what is going to be inside the bricks and mortar so that the bricks and mortar can be designed to be developed in order to enhance or promote the, the proper need of the educational. It's not exactly, it's not, it's not what your, your, the other group was brought in to see, you know, how many windows are broken and what furnaces will run down. This group is looking at the educational curriculum needs for the future of this district. That's what their job is.
So why, Mr. Chairman, are we placing this on the agenda this evening then? If it sounds like I'm getting two different answers, one from the superintendent and one for you. The superintendent appeared to be more, appeared to stress the facilities' nature of the RFP. You are stressing the educational planning and potential future curriculum needs of the district. Why are we putting, if it's a curriculum needs issue, why is this particular agenda item so necessary tonight? And if I might, part two of that question is, when is the last time we put out an RFP for an entity to give us what we're looking for tonight?
The reason it's on the agenda tonight is the conversation that we had with Rhode Island Department of Education on January 12th. It was the number one or the first person or group that is necessary for this step from the Rhode Island Department of Education. Again, you have to put in an application. The application has a format. The format says you will have this particular individual if you want any type of reimbursement, or the state being basically driving our bus, no pun intended. So that was the first person that we need to get on board because the development of the bricks and mortar should go around your curriculum rather than trying to stuff your curriculum into a building. If your need is technological, or some type of advancement, or you have a growing population, all these things will be picked up, and this group will help develop it. That is the precise reason why it's going out first. This is not the cart before the horse. This is the horse getting out of the barn and warmed up so that it can pull the cart. It's, it's from the state. They're the ones that are, that are helping us through the process, guiding us, I guess you would say, and then basically laying it out. And this is all formatted on the Rhode Island Department of Education webpage when you look at the necessity for replacement in a building, and it's all laid out for you. This is, this is just procedure at this point for this particular project.
What is it, we, earlier this evening, we appointed a number of individuals to the Facilities Subcommittee for the purpose of exploring the needs to either rebuild Rogers High School or to renovate Rogers High School, as well as, of course, as I mentioned, Pell and its infrastructure of, of physical plant needs. Of the 36 school districts in the state of Rhode Island, and perhaps this is more appropriate for the superintendent as a question, of the 36 districts in the state of Rhode Island, how many districts are required to place this or to put out an RFP for this if they are not in fact planning to rebuild a school? Is this a com, okay, so...
Not I'm aware of. Now, I don't know that, that you wouldn't want one of these individuals to help develop your curriculum anyway. We already have a scheduling group with a grant we got that was put into place, I think, at the meeting prior, or maybe two meetings ago. They're looking at other issues at the, I believe, at Thompson and at Rogers High School as far as scheduling, as we see it today in the here and now. But when we go through this process, and again, we are the number one school in the state for recommendation for replacement, so we are being as proactive as we possibly can.
So, if I'm correct in reading and talking, reading about, talking to Ride, hearing from my colleagues, the superintendent, et cetera, Ride is not at all prepared, and they are speaking from an in-the-moment standpoint because they have no idea whether a bond will be approved, or whether the question of a bond on the ballot will be approved by the General Assembly, or whether subsequently, if that happens, a bond itself will be approved by the voters. So speaking in the moment, Ride is not at all prepared, from what I have read, again, heard from Ride or from my colleagues and the superintendent, to replace Rogers High School. Is that correct?
No, that's not true. Ride did state that, of course, there are major bond issues that are going on to, into the budget, which would have to be voted on by the, the voters of the state of Rhode Island, and then subsequently followed up, if there's a bond in the city of Newport, it would have to be voted on by the voters of Newport. That doesn't take away the money that is already there in Ride right now, albeit much smaller part of money. The more aggressive part of money is in Governor Raimondo's budget request, but neither of which will preclude the fact that Rogers High School is in, is in need of repair. So regardless of whether they, the bond issue is passed or not, we still need to make our application for reimbursement for funding. We still need to go through this process based upon all of the information that we've gotten. On that one group of folks that you stated from March of 2016, who stated the school was in, you know, disrepair and needed, you know, 20-plus million dollars or more in rebuilding, and the state came up with, with a much higher number, but even so, it doesn't, it doesn't stop us from being proactive and doing what's right for the kids. The school is in a point where it needs to be replaced, and that's what the committee's going to decide whether we repair it or replace it. And with all that being said, this is the process we, we must follow to, to apply appropriately to be accepted by the state for any type of reimbursement whatsoever.
So, Mr. Chairman, having heard a couple of clarifications, first, that no other district in the state of Rhode Island, unless they intend to replace a school building, goes through this process of issuing an RFP for educational planner. And then subsequently, hearing that we, and everybody agrees, we, we must do something about the conditions at Rogers High School and very likely the lack of space at Pell, this to me is making a foregoing conclusion that the replacement of Rogers High School is imminent, not an infrastructure or physical plant upgrade to Rogers High School, or any other of the possibilities that might be brought forward by the Facilities Subcommittee that we appointed earlier this evening. We're asking these fine people to be a part of a Facility Subcommittee to determine what to do with Rogers High School, and we're making a decision this evening that says, you can make any decision you want, Facility Subcommittee, so long it is, so long as it is to replace Rogers High School. I have a number of concerns about the issuance of this RFP. I have a number of concerns about the need for something to be done at Rogers High School. I doubt, I mean, unless Ride wants to simply give the money away, I doubt that the state of Rhode Island, through Ride, the General Assembly, the governor's office, would be willing to issue us, let's be on the conservative side, issue us a 50% reimbursement for the replacement of Rogers High School when our nearby neighbors in Middletown have indicated that they would like to replace Middletown High School within two to three years. within two to three years. A $73 million replacement cost of Rogers High School, even at 50% reimbursement, will be near to $37 million that the state will pay. Who knows what the cost is for the replacement of Middletown High School, when and if that comes up, as they've indicated they want to do? Going through this process now, will we find ourselves, I ask, not for an answer, I ask just so the public can consider, will the state of Rhode Island realistically reimburse us and Middletown over the course of the next, let's say, five years, potentially $100 million to house maybe 1,400 students? This process, to me, is far, far too early. We haven't asked for the public's real input. We've given them a tour of Rogers. We haven't asked for the public's real input yet. We only appointed the Facilities Subcommittee this evening, but yet we're coming to the predetermination that we will replace Rogers High School or nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have some clarifications, but there was no predetermined notion of anything. I had an hour-long discussion after the tour at Rogers High School, and we talked about a number of issues, and that's about as long as I could keep everybody in their seats on that Saturday morning. And I want to thank the 50-plus people that actually were there that day. And there's no fix that's in, so to speak. There are a lot of options that are on the table. Could be a rebuild, could be a partial rebuild, could be a total rebuild. We're not sure of that, but the certain thing is, right now, the way that the school is currently, we need the input from all the folks that are out there. We have a great cross-section of the community. We have folks who have no children in the system, maybe just moved into Newport, but their taxpayers and they're concerned. But they all are pretty much in the... And I'm in the open mind, and I think the committee's in the open mind, that right now we have a clean sheet of paper. But we are certainly, actually, I would say, due to the fact that the state opened up these reports so late in the game that we're actually not early, we're late. So with all that being said, I, again, I'm hopeful and excited about the process. It's going to be a long and aggressive one. But there is no plan yet. The plan is being developed as we speak, and that's why we have to get this group in, and that's why we needed the RFP. So with no further questions, I would ask if all in favor of the...
I do have a point of clarification, if I could, Mr. Chairman. It says on the agenda, "Request for approval of RFP, RFI for educational planner." Just so the public knows, are we requesting approval to issue an RFP? Or are we requesting approval of a submitted RFP?
No, we're requesting to put it on the street.
Thank you.
Correct? Yes, yeah. Okay, with all that being stated, and thank you for the questions, all those in favor of the request for approval for the RFP? In favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The next would be "Request for approval of RIMPA Number 52, JROTC slab cutting and patching and condensate lines and repairs administration." Mr. Harrop, could you please come up to the rostrum?
Mr. Harrop's not here this evening, Mr. Hanos.
Who's on deck for this one?
Go ahead.
I can do what? I'm not really sure what this...
But do you have a question?
Yeah, I would imagine that someone from administration, Mr. Harrop, was going to give us a presentation as to what was going on, unless you know.
Right, just as it was said in... There's a proposal in the JROTC. They need it for the condensate line repairs in accordance to the bid that went out, the RPA. Right, that went out, and it's minor work there. It's in the budget, and ATC, in order to access leaking pipes that we know are there, needs to cut the slab in order to address it.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Ms. Sylvia, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any questions on the motions?
Was that the area that Jeff Watts pointed out when we were on the tour?
Yes.
Remember, we had that Saturday morning tour. Remember, he pointed out that area?
Yes.
That's the one? Okay.
In the ROTC, yes. Mr. Collin, you had a question?
Thank you. Can you tell me where in the budget this is... Where does the money for this exist in the budget for fiscal 18?
It's in the high school lines for, basically, repairs. Repair maintenance.
How much is that?
The estimate is $7,900.
No, no, no. It does not spell it out in the budget. The line item that our business manager is referring to is not spelled out in the budget that we approved. So if you could just tell me how much money we have dedicated to Rogers High School physical plant improvements, or even better than that, how much have we dedicated in our fiscal 18 budget to improvements, maintenance, if you will, for Rogers High School, Thompson Middle School, and Pell Middle School?
I think that the only question right now on the table that is along with the motion would be the line item for Rogers High School repair, which is directly related to the motion on the floor.
It was budgeted at $86,333.
For Rogers High School repair?
Rogers High School repairs, maintenance repairs.
How much of that $86,000-plus have we spent year-to-date?
$57,970.
Okay, and can you tell me... The purpose of this question, Mr. Chairman, is I intend to offer an oral amendment to this. Can you tell me how much we have dedicated to physical plant or maintenance upgrade?
For all the schools?
For the schools, yes. How much of our total budget are we dedicating to needs like this?
So, Dr. Collie's going to have to take a moment, and he's going to have to go through all the lines to add that up for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move on. I won't offer my oral amendment, but it's a disgrace what we have included in our total budget with regard... And this is entirely the fault of the Newport School Committee. It's nobody else's fault. It's a disgrace what we have included in our Newport School Department budget, roughly $39 million dedicated, which is dedicated towards physical plant or physical plant improvements, maintenance needs, et cetera. We used to have a rule, albeit you can't bind any future school committee to live by the rule, but we used to have sort of an unwritten rule that we dedicate 1% of our budget to physical plant needs, 1.5%, 2% at one point in time. And we have dedicated nowhere near that number for all three schools combined. $86,000 at Rogers, the school that is in most need of repairs. So I assume, without having the answer, that the other two schools are far less dollar-wise. And here we are, asking potentially for tens of millions of dollars from the voters when we can't even dedicate 1% of our total budget, $40 million budget, $400,000 to physical plant needs. I'm going to vote for this. It's necessary. But this is outrageous that we don't put, and it's our fault, again, that we don't put the money towards our physical plant and maintenance needs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Boland?
So it's not as if the Newport School Committee is trying to get away from, you know, responsibility for doing this. But we sat in a meeting with the State Department probably three years ago with the RIDE, and they came down and said that, basically, that the city is our landlord and that they're responsible for repairs. We came to an agreement with the city at that time that anything... We said, "Well, what then is, you know, what is just kind of maintenance, like trying to keep, you know, we don't have to come to you every minute for something?" They said, "Like, up to $25,000 is what they wanted us to put in the budget at the time." Is that correct? $25,000. And that anything over that, that we should come to them as a landlord and that they were going to fix the buildings and keep them up. And that's why we took out that large amount. It was one way of them trying to help out and helping us to, you know, be able to, you know, budget and to make our commitments. So that was probably four years ago? Yeah, the city at the time. So it was a change in how we did business. And as far as I know, that they're still honoring that change and taking care of things that we don't have money for in our budget.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the Request 5.3 for Rhode Island NPA Number 52 to repair the floor and the condensate lines in JROTC? All those in favor? Any opposed? So noted, thank you. The next order on the agenda would be, Dr. Collie recommends award bid Number NPS 18-039, Tools for Newport Public Schools Auto Tech Program in the amount of $6,529.81 to Granger. Funding for this bid award is provided from the local budget. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
Been moved by Kathy Sylvia, seconded by Ray Gomes. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor? Any opposed? So noted, thank you. Unanimous? Did you want us to add something?
Just in answer to the question, we have about approximately $258,000 for repairs that were budgeted.
Throughout the whole district?
Yes. For the buildings.
Thank you. The next would be Request 5.5, Policy. Dr. Flowers, second reading.
Thank you very much. We have some second readings and first readings. This first one is the second reading of Policy 4690, Human Resources Evaluation of Administrators. You've all had sufficient time to review this. You see that there's some change of the administrators' evals being forwarded to the superintendent no later than April 1st. That was backed up from June 30th and reported to the committee no later than April 15th. That was backed up from July. And that these evaluations will be available for review during this meeting upon request by a school committee member. So that's how that would be, the only addition to that particular page. Again, this is the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this policy be approved on the second reading.
Second. Motion is made by Ms. Sylvia and seconded by Mr. Gomes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So noted, the motion passes, thank you. For the second reading. This next would be the first reading. Dr. Flowers of 4771.
4771 is under Human Resources, Service Animals in Newport Public Schools. And it is a little more lengthy, but this comes from... It's a requirement by the Americans with Disabilities Act that in a defined service animals, it says that we will comply with the ADA and strive for a balance with students and staff. And the policy statement lists a number of areas in which all parties included are subject to very, very specific about which animals would fall into this category, the training, care, and upkeep of said animals and the particular conditions. Again, this is the first reading.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Sylvia, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gomes. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, on the first reading. Another first reading, Dr. Flowers. 5325, nondiscrimination.
Okay, here we are. 5325 is administrative policies, nondiscrimination. And this is... Has a history dating back a number of years. I have to turn my page back again. Bear with me a second. Okay, this is the first reading, of course, and is essentially in line with all of the Title IXs and Title VI, all these, the federal regulations and guidelines about nondiscrimination on many various... Many of the various bases that require the Newport Public Schools and all of the public entities to comply with.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. The motion is made by Ms. Sylvia and seconded by Ms. Boland. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed?
Aye, one.
Five-one, motion passes. The next would be...
5.8, it's the first reading of the snow removal, 7310. And I'm not going to read at you because you've already seen this. This is regarding the snow removal policy, again, for safety and security of all people involved. It lists all the areas in and around the school buildings. And it's pretty clear on the... What the plant engineers and members of the custodial staff are responsible for when they report to work in the event of a snowstorm. And the training and regarding the equipment, including snow plow trucks, spreaders, loading up the trucks, and so forth.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Sylvia, seconded by...
Me?
I'll second.
Dr. Flowers, any discussion on the issue? Ms. Boland?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. One is that at the bottom, it says that the work schedule will be determined by the, you know, by the plant manager. But what happens if a personnel can't come in on that shift? Like, in other words, it's not their normal shift. Can we force them to come in on a different shift? Or is that, you know, you know what I mean? Like, it says, basically, that they will come in when they're told to come in. What if they have babysitting or, like, issues? Like, is there going to be some flexibility? I mean, I don't know if we can force somebody that's not part of their, you know...
So my understanding with the custodians is they are all aware that they are on call, especially during storms. They were supposed to come in, yes.
Okay. My next question is, it says that two people are to be trained and capable of operating the snow plow truck and spreader. Is that for the whole district or per school?
No, that was for the whole district.
The whole district, okay. And I guess the other thing is, how are we doing with snow plows? How are we doing? Are we in a good position where we have enough snow equipment? I know that last time, at least one or two custodians brought in their own snow plows to work.
They brought in their own snow plows?
Yeah, snow blowers.
Snow blowers, okay. The custodians have requested of Mr. Harrop, they do feel that they do need more equipment and that if possible, have actually been asked if there was a, I'll call it, a large dump truck or something of that nature. They'd like us to keep our eyes open for something like that that would be more helpful and a lot more helpful as far as snow removal. They do believe they do need more equipment.
Yeah, being that we share services, one of the individuals that's missing tonight is Mr. Harrop, who we've been working with him to ensure that our staff realizes that if they need a bigger vehicle, they can simply call the city side, call Tom or have the appropriate individuals they need to get in contact with on the heavy-duty snow events where they may need something bigger than a pickup truck. And that's something, we're still a work in progress on that, but he's... Mr. Harrop is aware of it, and he's trying to...
As is the city manager and the director of public services.
So, any more discussion on this item? Mr. Collin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reading this, it looks like we're... This policy proposal is designed to dictate what plant engineers and custodial staff should do, albeit in just one situation here with regard to snow removal. Is this not previously understood by the plant engineers and custodial staff? Is this necessary because they do not somehow understand that this is what they are being asked to do by the administration? Or are they refusing to do this? Please tell me why...
It was a request of the superintendent of facilities, so it's clear and it's part of policy, and everyone is aware of the... of policy, and everyone is aware of the responsibilities of their duties.
With respect to the teachers in our district, do we institute policies which instruct them how to teach?
I'd have to go back and review curriculum, but I believe we do set a curriculum and require and ask that they implement the curriculum that is created, so, to some extent. But I'd have to go back and look at that particular policy regarding curriculum.
So, is this a change in policy? Is this something that they have not done before, or we have not explained to the custodial staff and plant engineers prior to tonight, prior to adoption?
Mr. Collin, if I could just, I have a request from someone that maybe we, maybe wait till Mr. Harab's here and maybe hold on to this one?
Great idea.
I don't know if that's something that, you want to yield to Florida, Mr. Gomes?
I do indeed want to yield to the vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we pull Policy Number 7310 for further discussion with Mr. Harab when he can attend the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One.
Two.
Any opposed? Ms. Sylvia and Dr. Flowers. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just want, not about this, well, this can be referenced. I believe at a professional development that we all sat at probably a couple of years ago now, time goes by fast, it was strongly recommended that whenever there is, I'm going to say a doubt or a question about some particular issues, whether it's human resources, any of these things, that it's always the safest to put it into policy. It can be referenced. That way, it's not, like, can we say an unwritten policy? It's best to have it written. So, this is one of the areas that really clarifies for everyone who's involved, administration, the superintendent of buildings, the men and women who are charged with doing all of this work. So, that is the purpose behind it. Keep in mind, this is the first reading.
And, Mr....
And this will be the opportunity perhaps for Mr. Harab to clarify a bit more, because, you know, the genesis of a lot of this did come from him.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvia?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, the superintendent of facilities is basically a new position in the last two years, and I think this clarifies the steps, and it's not, each school has its own authority. There's one person above everybody to make it clear when they should be at work. And so, one school doesn't go to work and the next one does, and it just streamlines everything and makes it very clear.
Okay. I mean, I just know that Mr. Gomes has a few questions, and I do as well, in other areas for Mr. Harab, and I don't see the real, hopefully, we don't have to utilize this policy between now and our next meeting. I'm hoping we don't have a heavy snow event.
Well, we could also, it's only first reading, we could approve it, and then on second reading, have Mr. Harab here.
I think the motion's been made to hold it, correct?
Well, you, who have made the motion, could move.
So, this is not, does the first reading have to be done again?
Right.
I would think so, yes. We're holding it for the next meeting. So, Mr. Galvin, the intent, I believe, for Mr. Gomes before the first reading was to have Mr. Harab here to answer questions, so his request was to hold it until the next meeting, till Mr. Harab could be here. So, the intent is that it would again, it would be the first reading again at the next meeting?
That's correct.
Subject to any modifications at that time?
Correct.
And the second reading would be in April?
So, by the time we have the second reading, there'll be no more snow. Hopefully.
Okay. So, yes.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
All right. So, that motion to hold was four to two. It was Collin, Gomes, Hanos, and Bolan to hold it, and Dr. Flowers and Sylvia to move forward. The next request would be for Newport School Committee Legal Counsel to contact cell tower vendors, that's 5.9. Superintendent or Mr. Galvin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, looking for guidance from the school committee as to what you would like me to do. I've made a suggested form of letter to put the vendors on notice to remind them that their time is up and that we need their information as to what they intend to do. In the meantime, to the extent that rent payments have been paid, I would suggest that you put them on notice that those payments will be processed, preserving any and all rights that you want to retain relative to any rent payments that either haven't been made or any further more assertive steps that you may want to take in the future. That's my suggestion to you, that will maintain the status quo. If you have a different direction as a committee, I'm happy to follow your guidance and direction in that regard, but it's up to you as a committee. And I've made a suggestion to you, at the very least, to clarify those portions of it, and I'm certainly available for any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whoever put this on, it says admin, but if it was Attorney Galvin, I commend him. If it was the superintendent, I commend her. It is about time that we took the necessary steps to alert the three cell tower or cellphone provider companies that their time is up at the tower. We have gone through this now for almost three years, and all three cellphone service providers' contracts have ended. And I believe the 120 days that each of those three providers have after the contract ended to remove their equipment has also passed. So, having said that, and with great appreciation for the neighbors and everybody who has been expressing their concern about this issue for years now, I move passage of item 5.9 on the agenda.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. I do have, are you requesting Superintendent Jermaine or Dr. Colley guidance? Do you say you have actually, obviously, they haven't vacated, and it appears as though, or it seems as though they're still paying some type of rent or fee. Are you, are you looking for guidance on whether we should receive the monies, or, I mean...
Well, I'm looking for guidance as to alerting them that you intend to have those payments processed, but preserving your rights without prejudice in doing so. And that's the intent of the letter that I've suggested for your consideration to be sent. So, as, instead of having those funds sit at City Hall, for example, they can be processed accordingly, preserving your rights that you may or may not want to assert sometime in the future.
Excellent. So, the motion was to move this forward by Mr. Collin and seconded by Ms. Sylvia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
5.10, Request for Approval of RFP Medicaid Billing Services Administration. Would you like to brief us on this quickly?
Basically, the contract with the service provider that helps us put in the Medicaid reimbursements into the federal government expired some time ago. So, as soon as I found out, we put out an RFP to try to find somebody either to replace them or to have a new contract with the vendor that we currently have been using.
I just want to point out that Mr. Roy also had noticed this, so when he, when Dr. Colley came on, the two of them immediately addressed it.
Okay. So, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Bolan, you have a question?
Yeah. Well, I went over this, like, very carefully, because, you know, obviously, this is the subject near and dear, you know, to the hearts of Newport taxpayers, because it, you know, it's reimbursed, you know, involves some substantial reimbursements.
Revenues.
Right, in revenues that come into the district. So, I mean, I noticed that in reading this, they, first of all, they are located in Newport. And we also have, if we go with this tonight, that we're going to be getting four hours a week, right? So, they'll come in and help. So, do you, because we, so, things have not, you know, like, the last couple of years, things have seemed to, you know, gone way down our reimbursements. Do you feel that we're going to start, you know, collect, what happened, first of all? Have you figured that out yet? How we went down for those reimbursements? And what are we going to do, you know? Are we going to be utilizing those services to get this back up again? I'm just, you know, some changes need to be made.
So, I'll start. So, we had a new, so, when, we have recently found out and exploring when students, for instance, are screened for an IEP, et cetera, that after exploring what can be reimbursed and what cannot be reimbursed, we found out that just when we go through that process, those steps can be reimbursed, whether the child qualifies for an IEP or not. So, we've changed practices in which, when we go to do the testing going forward, we will have the parents at that point in time sign the documentation so that we can file for Medicaid reimbursement. We also found that in years past, as Mr. Roy had noticed, and Dr. Colley, when they came on, they worked on immediately, they looked at the history of the Medicaid funding, and we weren't always receiving the full revenues that we needed or we put in the budget. So, that's something we're going to look at very carefully, and we are looking at. And we also have, I believe, Ms. Grantham, with her department, they're actually going back in time, which we can go back in time, to seek reimbursements for some paperwork they did not know they could file for, and I believe that was through your discussions with Compuclaim. So, I'll start, and you can piggyback.
Those pieces, and just to add, we've been working with them to review all the paperwork that we have to see what pieces have been missed, so we can go back and seek that reimbursement. They also are, we've had some staff turnover, and so, new people don't necessarily know what the process is to provide us with the information. We need to seek the reimbursement. So, they've actually come down and started to do a lot more training to update the people who are new, or the people who just have forgotten how to do this, or, in some cases, finding that certain pieces weren't connecting between our computers and their computers. So, they've been very helpful to try to get us back to where we should be.
I just read that there were just many services available, and I was hoping that we were taking advantage of all of them. They will come in and train anybody new as there's turnover, you know? They guarantee a lot of things in here, and obviously, we weren't really taking advantage of it the last couple of years. And thank you for putting it on, you know, the forefront.
Any further discussion on this particular issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next would be Request for Approval of Agreement with Direct Energy for Natural Gas Administration. Is there a motion on the floor to accept this? And we can...
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? I think it's self-explanatory, we're looking into entering into an agreement for, to lock us in, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Thank you. The next items we have are Item 6. They're discussion items. Follow-up Report on Steps Taken to Increase Student Attendance Rates. That was put in by myself, and I believe Mr. Vance might be here to...
Nice.
I don't know if that's the issue or something else.
Yep, no, Mr. Vance is here. Well, he has reports in front of you. You have reports from Principal Vance, I believe you also have from Ms. Westman, from Pell, what they've been doing, and I believe there's a Thompson one you have update dated February 2018 on what they're doing.
I guess I would ask, I know it's a difficult thing to deal with. I get it. And are we, is there anything else we can do from where we sit here? I know that it's, I'll say it right now to anybody who's listening, to parents, we need you. You get your kids to school, and we'll do the best we can, but if you don't get them to school, there's not a whole lot we can do. We've got hundreds of kids we're chasing every single day. We have 2,200 kids in the district, and we're chasing a couple of hundred kids a day through phone calls. We need you guys to step up to the plate and tell your kid to get out of bed and get to school. Get them to school, and then our staff can do the work. But, I mean, short of that, I think you've come up with some outside-of-the-box things that the, if you wanted to just maybe tell the, tell the folks some of the things you've done. I think you're going to duct tape someone to a wall for the kids that have the best...
The dean. Not the kids.
I mean, duct tape a staff member to the wall. If they, you know, pick a favorite teacher, you get to duct tape or something. You got some, some things you're trying to get these kids to come to school, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we, we do need the parents to get these kids up and at them and get them to school.
Yeah. So, some of the stuff that we've put in place, so we do monthly awards for perfect attendance. We do monthly awards for, you know, who, what grade has the highest attendance rate for the month. Right now, I'm trying to gather the rolls of duct tape. So, we're going to end up duct taping John Hanow, the dean of students, to the wall, not too, not too far after we return from break. And so, that's, that's like a whole grade-level celebration about the junior class having the highest attendance rate in the building. So, we're moving. We're not moving as quickly as, you know, I would like or would like to see, but we're definitely moving. I think after an event like that, it'll, it'll shine a little more light on our attendance, and hopefully, more kids will, will arrive to school on a regular basis. You know, from my perspective, when we're looking at the kids that are not coming, it's the ones that are over that 10% that we're really struggling with. And we need, we're trying to leverage the truancy pipeline to help us with that. And we don't always get that, that stern hand from, from that system, but we're trying all we can. We call every day, send letters home, we reach out to families. We have, you know, the truancy, Eddie Merritt going out to homes, Orlando Peace connecting with kids. So, it's something that we're focusing on, but like you said, it's a, it's a, it's a lot to get, especially at high school, to get kids to come to school when they've had years of not attending. You know, it's not typical that a student just stops attending once they get to high school. It's usually a pattern that grows over time.
I have a question.
Ms. Sylvia?
I just have a question on the teachers. In January, there were 33 that had perfect attendance.
With staff?
Yes. Staff members. Well, I want to hear it. The teachers get the award. 25 in February. How many are there in total? Do you know offhand, just?
So, I haven't, I haven't tracked, you know, month by month to see who has had perfect attendance all the way along. Like, I try, I give them an opportunity to re-up every month, and so, you know, family things got in the way or something happened, and they weren't able to make it to school one day, that doesn't carry over into the next month, so I just really, I kind of refresh month by month.
Yeah, I just wondered, because it said 33 staff members.
Yep.
Well, how many staff members in total?
Oh, in total? So, we're looking at our teaching staff, which is 70-some-odd teachers, and then we're also looking at custodians, we're looking at our Council 94 members, we're looking across the board. So, it's not, it's not just the classroom teachers when I say staff. I don't have a number off the top of my head.
But on this, it gives the teachers, they're the ones that get the award, so...
Those, those are, those are the ones that, so, we pick randomly.
Out of a hat. Right. But I would, so it would include custodians, too?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolan?
Yeah. I would venture to say that's a really low number, Colley, if you put, you know, I bet we have well over 100 staff there. And so, but my question was, so, another thing that, I know that you got this, these numbers, these, that you put in by taking the number of tardies and the number of absentees. I would say it would also be helpful if we saw the number of dismissals, because I always count those, because if you're dismissed, you're not there.
Yep.
So, I'm just saying that. I also would like to see these numbers separate, you know, like, the attendance numbers without the tardy, because at least when they're tardy, they come.
Right.
So, I'm just saying that that might be another number to put in that, that formula. I think your numbers would go down, but if we could see next month when you do it, just what the attendance rates were, like, you know, for, for your, you know, like, the average, too.
Right. So, right, so right now, that's, those are the numbers that I'm actually posting in the hallways for kids, and I post on Instagram every week. So, we're in the low 90s right now, attendance, with everybody attending school, but that's not looking at tardies and dismissals, that's looking at everybody that's been there.
So, I just want to, and we can do that for, from a district perspective, but that's not how it's calculated for ride or anything else. So, we're doing it according to how we're, we have this information lined to ride.
Yeah.
So, but we can do that for you. And were you talking about students, or were you talking about staff? What were you referring to at that point in time, that conversation right there?
Well, I just think all these numbers this Cherokee gave us, I would just like to see that, that the percent with just the app...
see that, that the percent with just the absentee, I mean, I wouldn't mind if you put the dismissals in, I mean, the dismissals in it, too, because it, they're not there when they're dismissed, but, you know, at least when they're tardy, they come in.
Okay, all right.
Just saying.
So we'll do that for all the schools, so it's not just the high school.
All right, any other discussion on that?
Information.
And congratulations to the junior class, it looks like it was a pretty tight race, though. We're looking at 79, 80, 81, and 82 percent? I mean, that's going from senior to sophomore to freshman to junior, so it's pretty close, so they're in the hunt.
Yep.
Who gets to tape Hanau next? I think the next discussion item we have is advisory update provided, that was from Mr. Gomes.
Do you need your laptop, or are you working on campus? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is about advisory, and it's something that Mr. Vance has been working with the high school staff, and it is something to help us, actually, as Mr. Hanau, the chair, just shared, absenteeism, attendance, it's very complicated, it's not, it's never just one answer, there's many factors tied into it, and one of the things that come up over visits to other high schools, over discussion, after looking at data and looking at the research, it's the personalization and the adult connections and the relationships between student and caring adults, teachers, that really makes kids want to come to school. When teacher, when students know that people care, and they're there for them, overwhelmingly, even in my own little focus groups, talking to students, they constantly say, it's when people notice, you know, people notice I'm not in school, or people ask me how I'm, how I'm doing, and know my name, and what I'm interested in, that's really key. And that ties into one of our strategic plan initiatives, the ILP, and that's why the ILP, we're starting at the middle school level, and we feel it's so important to talk about the Individualized Learning Plan with our students, starting in the middle school, but we're also introducing it at the high school.
The technology.
But we have.
Yeah, we have it here, yeah.
We do have.
So, so advisory, like what Mr. Jermaine was, was talking about is really about that personalization for kids. And I know at the conclusion of last year, you know, before I came, before I was on board, there was a decision not to have that built into the schedule, but looking at our strategic plan, and then looking at the BEP, that personalization is something that we really need to have in place. And the easiest way to do that personalized approach where you hit every student is an advisory. Right, so you can look at after-school initiatives, you can look at groups, clubs, activities, but those don't always hit every child. Advisory, having that, that time that's dedicated in small groups of between 10 and 12 students with one staff, you know, you're providing that opportunity for kids to have that personal connection. In, in theory, what we're looking to do is have the groups that start off in freshman year, that one, that 1 to 12 ratio, have those, those students with the same teacher over the four years, so those relationships kind of grow and foster a more positive relationship. And, you know, the research out there talks about how kids come to school when they feel connected with school. Kids, you know, attend and achieve better when they have a connection with school, and have a connection with an adult in a, in a school building. And so this, this approach being pushed in halfway through the year, you know, from my perspective, is something that's meaningful and important, and with the issues that we're struggling with, with attendance achievement and things along those lines, this is something that we, we need to try and address those things. You know, and so when we're looking at, you know, if kids are, if the kids aren't coming to school, and we can leverage that adult who has a positive relationship maybe with that child, to have the conversation about what's going on, what's in the way, how can we, how can we get you here, it just gives us a vehicle for doing those things. Now, on top of that, you know, you're also looking at the college application process, kids looking for jobs and careers, things along those lines, so that, that time, we can also shift around a little bit to meet some of the needs that we need across the board in the building.
No, I just, may I ask one question? This is starting, right?
Yeah, so we've, we've had two advisories so far, the two weeks before vacation, and really, those were kind of like get-to-know-you kind of activities. You know, I got, I got a lot of positive feedback from students, I got a lot of positive feedback from staff. You know, we're gonna roll into things that are gonna be a little more targeted when we're, we're talking about student behavior and choices and things like that, so the conversations may be a little different than just a get-to-know-you kind of activity, but it takes time to get there. You have to, like I said, you have to build that relationship and that trust, so.
I think it's great.
Ms. Bowlen?
Yeah, next year, are there, I know that you've been, they've been out, the bar group has been out looking at different models for this, so have you thought about doing it on an everyday basis, like a very short period, you know, sort of that daily contact, or you think that the model of just meeting once a week works better?
So, so for right now, this is, we're just, we're putting this in as a, like, we're dipping our toe in the water. We're gonna wait to hear back from all of those groups that have visited schools and try and come up with the best approach that's gonna fit our needs, but also create that personalization and, and listen to our teachers that have gone to the schools in New York and in Mass and Maine, and what, what approaches were being used there that were positive and productive, and maybe can we tweak those a little bit to, to fit in Rogers?
Mr. Gomes?
Think so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Vance? All right.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
If it's all right with the committee, Mr. Vance is going to step out now.
Thank you, that's fine. All right, let's see, next would be the consent agenda, we've got the approval of the minutes and personnel actions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carlin.
There are three items on the consent agenda that I would like to ask questions of or about, so with that in mind, instead of adapting the consent agenda as a whole, how would you like me to proceed?
I'll just approve the minutes.
What would be the appropriate fashion, Mr. Galvin?
Well, if there are items that would desire to be removed from the consent agenda, should identify them and take them off, and you can deal with them on a case-by-case basis. I do notice there is one on 7.2F non-renewals. Typically, in that regard, you do hear a quick presentation by administration with an opportunity for any member of, who's impacted to make a statement to you, and then you would take action after that. I'm not sure if that was one of the items that Mr. Carlin had dealt with, but...
Indeed, it is, and on that note, has the school committee been informed about this in executive session, or have we informed the candidate in question that the candidate has the opportunity to have, and I'll let Mr. Galvin, who I think is probably aware of what my thought is, explain the rest.
Well, I'm not sure what your thought is, but the typical process for non-renewals is a presentation to the committee as to the rationale for the request, and then an opportunity by the affected teacher or tan, if they wanted to express a statement to you to consider before you take your action. That's the typical process that happens annually in dealing with these.
That, that's almost my thought. My question is, with regard to being able to address a personnel matter in public, specifically this item on our agenda, must we notify the teacher or the individual ahead of time that the employee has the right to, well, does the employee have the right to request that the item be discussed in executive session? That's the first question.
No.
Okay.
Only you have the right to go into executive session, the affected individual only has the right to reject that and say, "Talk about me" in open session. They don't have the right to say, "Talk about me" in executive session.
Okay, great, thank you. Superintendent Jermaine, regarding that particular item, have we notified the individual that the individual has the right to have their case, for lack of a better phrase, addressed in public session?
The Director of Human Resources did contact all the employees impacted and affected, and yes, and I believe we do have someone here this evening, and that person does have the right to speak to you if they...
Is, is it about that particular item that I just...
Yes.
...referenced?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I'll let it, I'll let it go from there. Mr. Chairman, can we pull that, if we adopt the agenda, the consent agenda inclusive of that item, then I think either we are not abiding by the rule to allow that individual to speak to us publicly, if that's correct, or we are doing something perhaps that we don't want to do.
I, I would just suggest that you make a motion to remove 7.2F from the consent agenda, and that would allow that to be discussed separately.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to remove Agenda Item 7.2F, found under the consent calendar, for separate discussion.
There a second?
Is there a second?
There should be a second, I recommend, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to continue for now 7.2C.
Well, we have to deal with these one at a time.
I, I think you need to...
There's already a motion on the floor.
Deal with that motion before you go to the next one.
Any discussion on the item that Mr. Carlin has asked to be held, seconded by Mr. Gomes? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, clarification, I haven't asked for it to be held, I asked for it to be removed from the consent calendar as a whole, to be addressed separately by the committee.
As long as that's appropriately stated, that was my desired result of what I was stating.
Right.
Maybe I didn't articulate it correctly, but we are gonna speak about this issue tonight. We are just pulling it out of the lump of, okay.
Correct.
Do you have a discussion on that, Becky?
No.
You put your hand up.
I got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
There's a second request, I think.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue, I haven't written a 7, or pulled 7 to C, number 10, actually continue that request to the next meeting.
Okay.
That's on a leave without paying.
There's a second on that, any discussion?
Which number was it? 7.10. Number 10.
It was...
Leave of absence, C, and it's number 10.
C10.
C10.
Any discussion on that?
I do have one question, that won't affect, I noticed the start date is next week, it won't affect the start date of that meeting.
No, it will not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carlin.
Back to the consent calendar itself. Under Appointments, specifically Number 4, the superintendent has an explanation for the committee as to how, or as to what this position is. She also says that it is a newly created position, unlike, as best I can see, all the other positions. So my question to the superintendent is, where is this newly created position budgeted?
This position was a position that Ms. Grantham had put forward that for the students at the high school, we had a shift, and another teacher is taking over this position. It is a position that was repurposed, the funding was in it for the former position, and now this is the name of the new position.
We may have a failure to communicate here. I don't believe it's a teacher position at all, it's under Appointments, Number 4, as I said, and as I'm reading it, the individual is recommended to fill the newly created position.
I'm, I'm sorry, what number, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlin.
A4.
Thank you.
And again, my, my question is not about the relevance of the position, but about where the position is budgeted in the fiscal 18 budget.
My understanding is that it is under salaries, unless Dr. Colley knows differently, it's in the salary line.
How can it be, when I have repeatedly asked for months about the salary line that the school committee passed as part of the fiscal 18 budget, and when we ran out of the budgeted money from the salary line item, we took from another line item, very specifically, we took from, as I'm saying now for the fourth time at the fourth meeting, not in a row, but I'm saying this for the fourth time, in order to fill vacant positions that are unbudgeted, we have taken, according to your own words, we have taken from a line item that the fiscal 18 budget included, which was a line item that dedicated money to out-of-district tuition. So we had run out of money already three months ago, how all of a sudden are we getting new money for that particular personnel line item? We're gone, that money's gone.
You're, you are absolutely correct, there's a communication problem. I'm not understanding where you're saying money has run out, and Ms. Grantham oversees the Special Ed Department, and she moved funding, which was previous year, previous, sorry, previous months ago.
Mr. Carlin, if you'll allow me for a minute, I think you're on two different, you're on two different topics. Number 3 would pertain to Mr. Carlin's question about the budget line item he's asking, number 4 does not pertain to the special education budget for salaries. Number 4 is a budgeted position within, I think Mr. Carlin would like you to explain number 4, but the budgeting for number 4 does not come out of the special education salary line.
Mr. Gomes is entirely correct, that's what I meant to say.
Mr. Carlin was asking for number 4, the newly created, it's in here as a newly created, although it's not a newly created position, it's filling a position with a new title, I think is what Mr. Carlin's asking you to explain. It says it's a newly created position, verbatim, in the, on the sheet.
A4. Services assistant.
I think if you would just, to explain the position to Mr. Carlin, he would understand, I think that's what he's looking for. Superintendent Jermaine?
Sorry, can, on the recommendation sheet to me from Nancy Markey, and are we talking about number 4? Is that the position you're looking at?
A4.
A4. A-4, yes.
Okay.
A-4.
Okay. All right. So just for clarification for the audience and for the committee, if you look at, there's not a correlation, if you look at A-4, where appointments transfers with just names, and then you look at A-4 on the recommendation sheet, they're two different names and two different positions.
They're basically flipped.
Correct. All right, so that's why Mr. Carlin and I, having the discussion just then, all right, so we're looking, you're looking at A-4 on the appointment sheet, I'm just clarifying with Mr. Carlin, just so, Mr. Carlin, I just want to make sure we're both looking at the same document. You're looking at the document from Nancy Markey to me that writes, "To fill the newly created administrative service assistant position," correct?
That is correct. This is not a public document.
Correct. So, that position is budgeted, it is under salaries, and it was a C-94 position, and the funds from that position are now being used for this newly created position that is now out of the bargaining unit.
Perfect.
All right.
We went through all of this for essentially, well, I don't want to say no reason, but I just wish you would have these things explained to us. There are things on the appointment sheet which clearly dictate what is a budgeted vacant position and what is not a budgeted vacant position. And in this case, I was looking at it, and it had the same language as the budgeted items, but for, it said, "This is a new position."
I understand, and that's why when we did the posting, we did put "budgeted" on it, but I hear what you're saying about the change.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent Germaine.
Thank you.
Are there any further items that would like to be discussed before we approve the consent agenda? Short those two? There was two, I believe, the third item, Mr. Carlin just had a question on?
It was clarified with the answers we just went through. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it's just the two items that we're asking? Okay.
So moved.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There were none? Next up would be...
So do we have someone here to discuss F?
I believe so. So please help me here, Mr.?
7.2F?
Correct.
Superintendent should give a short presentation, and then a statement from anybody in response. Give me a minute.
72F.
Okay.
In your pack, in your backup, it's at the back portion, you will see that there are three letters from either the Director of a department or the building principal. During this time of year, the school district has the option of considering whether or not they have an individual in a position, if they feel they could seek another candidate that could fill the position perhaps better. I think the easiest way to say maybe it's not the right fit, so by law and by regulation, I have to make this recommendation to you prior to March 1st. And so the recommendation, after consultation with my Director of Departments and with building principals, you have three non-renewals for this evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of a non-renewal? Is that the appropriate?
That would be.
If you would come up to the rostrum, please state your name. This is a first for me, so I just want to make sure we do it right.
Dear Newport School Committee members, my name is Letizia Rivera. I am Rogers High School Spanish Language Teacher. I apologize in advance if I appear nervous, but I have never had to come to a committee meeting and defend myself. To all of you, I would like to say, I love teaching my students. I love my job at Rogers High School. I have worked hard these past two years. I am dedicated to my job at Rogers High School and to my students. To my surprise, I was notified at 4:45 on February 14th, 2018, by email that there would not, that there would be a meeting today for non-renewal of my contract. This notification has only given me a couple of days to figure out what I'm supposed to do or how to have this not happen. I am sure, I'm not sure if I am supposed to ask for legal counsel or ask to please have this adjourned or dismissed, given the circumstances I state below. In all honesty, I would think there would be certain procedures to be followed, rather than two business days' notice. I'm sorry, this is stressful for me. I began working at Rogers High School during 2016-2017 school year as a Spanish Language Teacher. I was hired on a one-year contract subject to renewal. During my first year at Rogers High School, I worked part-time teaching two Spanish II classes. In addition to teaching my two classes at Rogers High School, I helped out in the Rogers High School library and substituted for teachers that were absent. I am dedicated to Rogers High School, my students, and my career. I have not missed a day's work. I have perfect attendance record since 2016 because I believe in being in class for my students. During my first year at Rogers High School, the principal was Mr. Goss. He was very professional and very supportive of me. Mr. Goss encouraged me often by offering positive feedback. He evaluated my performance three times during my first year at Rogers High School, and each of my evaluations, I received a fair score. As you must be aware, new teachers are evaluated their first three years, three times per year. In addition, Principal Goss wrote an impressive letter of reference for me before he left Rogers High School. Due to my respectable performance during 2016-2017 school year, I have made copies of these for you. I have continued to teach in the same manner Principal Goss encouraged me to this year. Therefore, I don't understand why there is a problem or these proceedings. Since the beginning of the school year 2017-2018 till present, I have not received any warnings or any indications that there was anything wrong or a discussion of any type of remediation. This year, I have only had one evaluation by new Principal Mr. Vance. His evaluation was negative, but I am confident it does not reflect my teaching style. I am a dedicated teacher. I have voiced to Principal Vance that I feel the evaluation was not the best day due to it being on a scheduled quiz day and not on me teaching a lesson. I have also pointed out to Principal Vance that I do not feel standard procedures were followed, since the evaluation was canceled, then rescheduled, with only giving me two days' notice. I had a quiz on the day of the later evaluation rescheduled, that was a few days later. Due to my lack of understanding the reason for the non-renewal of my contract and its implications, would you please postpone until I can figure out what I should do? I sincerely want to continue to work for Rogers High School. I have dedicated myself to Rogers High School. As you can imagine, I am extremely upset concerning this situation. This non-renewal of my contract negatively affects my career. I have worked hard and diligently to become a teacher, a profession I love. Are there any other procedures that could be followed to evaluate my performance or to inform me of what the issues are and discussions of the issues that have led to this meeting? Committeeing members, I hope you will all take into account my dedication to Rogers High School and the Newport Public School students and community. My first year at Rogers High School, I made myself available to fill in wherever needed and Principal Goss impressed of me that entire year, through his evaluations and impressive letter of recommendation, as well as the impact this will have on the future of my career as a Spanish Language Teacher, a career I cherish. Thank you for your time. My apologies, but I also have one more question. When will you reach a decision?
Thank you for coming up and speaking up. There are some procedures, I'm going to go over them now with the Superintendent, which will be, we will talk about those openly, as far as procedures and what I can and can't ask. But I believe that procedurally, if there is a non-renewal, and Mr. Galvin, you can correct me if I'm wrong and give me any guidance, that it's a matter of the beginning of a process, and that it has to be done by state law by March 1st. But that being said, it's not a done deal, I don't believe. I believe there's an opportunity for the individual to go through, we went through this in my first year, of not getting into non-renewal at time, but the individuals are afforded some recourse, and I don't want to put words in it, I don't want to put anything in anybody's mind, but I believe there is a procedure, this being one of them, the first step.
Yeah. You've identified much of the process, Mr. Chairman, and you are constrained by statute, and you are constrained by timeframe set forth in the statute, such that if you do not take action tonight, you will not have that action available to you as a school committee. Any affected teacher that might receive notification certainly has appeal rights, and they should probably speak with their union relative to getting advice concerning it. And your obligation this evening is to hear the recommendation of the Superintendent, provide the opportunity for the affected teacher to make a statement, which has been done, and it's not a hearing process tonight, it's not an evidentiary hearing, those kinds of things. Should there be any appeal of any action you might take, take place at a later date. So it's just the opportunity to present the statement, and the school committee takes its action.
So, to be clear, let's just say if the school committee agreed and went along with the recommendation of the Superintendent, Ms. Rivera still has the opportunity to come back and have evidentiary procedures if she goes with her union or whomever, and come before us again. So this is not the last stop, this is actually the beginning, correct?
There are, that's correct. There are appeal rights, and just as a reminder, it's an annual event that sometimes is reduced in numbers in terms of how many individuals are impacted. There are other years that there are very many numbers of teachers before you because of the constraints you're under. It's never a pleasant task typically for the school committee to take these votes, but it's something you're faced with every year.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Mr. Galvin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlin?
We are faced with these unpleasant tasks every year, but they're usually unpleasant tasks that involve not understanding what our budget will be. This is different, correct?
This is more related to performance than simply budgetary. Budgetary has been expanded statutorily, so your time constraints relative to that are greater. Years ago, everything was dealt with by March 1, but the budgetary ones, you have a little more time on.
Mr. Chairman, question for the Superintendent.
Go ahead.
Superintendent Germaine, did Principal Vance explain to Ms. Rivera the specific reasons why Principal Vance was recommending to you, to recommend to the school committee, not to renew the contract?
I can't speak for Mr. Vance. I can just say that Mr. Vance made the recommendation to me. He did share with me, he has had conversations, yes, with Ms. Rivera.
So Mr. Vance told you the reasons why Ms. Rivera would not be renewed?
He has shared that with me, yes.
You wish to share them tonight?
No.
Tonight is not an evidentiary hearing, Mr. Chairman. It's simply your statutory obligation and the opportunity to present a statement by the...
Mr. Galvin knows that that's not the question that I asked.
Well, I think that some of the information is, A, probably, I don't know that, it's, I can't speak for Ms. Rivera.
The individual has asked to be here in public. I'd like to know the reasons why you are suggesting to terminate our contract.
This is not an evidentiary hearing, is what I'm suggesting and advising to you, Mr. German.
I'm not voting to terminate someone's contract without being told why.
Any further questions? That being said, the recommendation from the Superintendent is for non-renewal for Ms. Rivera's in front of us. We usually don't mention the names, but she is standing here in front of us. All those in favor? Ms. Boland?
I just have one question. So because the other candidates didn't show up, they don't have a right then? Like, would Ms. Rivera be the...
No, they still have a right.
They still have a right?
They have the right, they have the same rights of appeal as anyone.
They would all have a right.
I would just like to make sure, you do understand that this is a process tonight that you have an appeal? You do understand? I just want to make sure that you're clear on what's happening.
I do understand.
So that you would have another hearing to defend yourself and the action potentially that's being taken against you.
Correct.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, nobody's kind of made sure that you knew, and I just wanted to hear that you understood what was happening.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Any other questions for the panel or anybody? All those in favor of...
Is this a separate?
The same.
No, no, this is not an evidentiary hearing. Only the teacher can make a statement.
Yeah, I think that information would probably be best served if this were to go forward and there was an appeal process. Any and all of that information at that point in time will be afforded to Ms. Rivera to defend her position. Yeah.
Do you all have the blue copies of one, the statements? And the other three copies, you don't have a copy of the recommendations?
No, we just have...
That wouldn't be at this time, no.
It's not appropriate for tonight's session.
All those in support of or in favor of the recommendation of the Superintendent for the non-renewal, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for Secretary, who made the motion? Who made the second?
Who made the motion to start? Kathy? I don't know who made the motion to...
It was a motion to remove it.
Right, so just this final motion to adopt the recommendation?
I don't know if I did it procedurally correct.
Then if you could re...
Is there a motion on the floor to, thank you, I apologize.
It's okay.
It's getting late. I'm sorry. Just hit me with a stick, Neil. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the Superintendent for this particular non-renewal?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Ms. Sylvia, second? I'll second it.
I'll sec, no, I'll second, I'm sorry.
Now you can proceed to your vote.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Next, we have, we don't need to make any more, we saved the other one for the next month, correct?
Correct.
So we're moving on to monthly correspondence.
Do we need, just to, do we have to approve the minutes, 7.1?
Did we do that already? I thought we did that.
That was part of the consent agenda that you voted on.
Just checking.
Correspondence from A.D. Jim Colley regarding Lacrosse Fields. This is still a work in progress with multiple moving pieces as of today. Fort Adams will allow me to host games in April only, Monday through Friday, VOR, I'm not sure what that means, will take over the park come May. Ongoing discussions with the city about use of Murphy Field and the field at RHS starting in the 19th of March for practices. Games at RHS when necessary. Huge concerns about overuse and wearing down both fields. Field is used heavily in the fall for soccer and spring lacrosse. Independent use of sinking areas are visible on the track and field. This is behind the Rogers High School complex, which we are aware of that, I don't even think they can run on that track because it's in such poor shape. Springtime use... Springtime use of turf at Freebody Park per city's contract with Salve Regina is limited to RHS softball, currently not an option. Neighbors were, quote, "a reason," unquote, cited by Ed Harrington that the city's recent park improvement grant did not include Murphy Field. Placing a, quote, "multi-use field," unquote, at Murphy Field was part of the package but removed prior to their approval. That is an email from James Colley to Kathy Nash CC, Jared Vance, worth noting this evening. I believe that's all the monthly correspondence that we have.
I move that it be received.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so noted. Next would be reports from the superintendent. Superintendent Germaine, if you could, we've got nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Actually, one would be, the first two are from the business manager, expenditure and revenue reports, and the public school restricted grants reports. Dr. Colley, if you wouldn't mind?
As you see in your packet, you have an expenditure report still organized by object. And we did make some changes according to some of the requests from the school committee to try to look at some of the pieces of information that would be useful as we head towards the end of the year. One of those being the adjustments that have been made over the last six months or so to the budget in order to balance the accounts within each department, and also to provide you with an idea of what amounts have been encumbered or put aside for later expenditures in the year as a way to begin to project, how much money do we need to get to June 30th and still remain on balance? From some of the information that I provided in terms of salaries, I still believe we're on target to be balanced. You have about 49% left in the salary lines, and basically you have about half a year left, seeing that you actually have, basically at the end of January, five more months, which is about half the school year, to pay for staff, for most of the staff, except for the few people that are year-round, mostly administrative, which is a small amount. At this point, I would see, I would say that you have as a beginning template to explore is this idea of seeing the adjustments that have been made on different object lines. And if you have any questions, I'm hoping that this better prepares you to discuss the budget as we get towards June.
Are there any questions on the budget? Go ahead, Mr. Carlin.
Thank you. Quick question. You don't note on the update here the status of our fiscal '17 budget surplus, is that right?
I did not note it here.
Okay, so we, it's safe to assume, based on the answer that I was given last month, that we still stand at the $974,000 fiscal surplus, correct? Or fiscal year '17 surplus?
Fiscal year '17, that is the amount of surplus overall that the auditors have accepted into last year's budget. Part of that is restricted. In other words, you can't have access to it because it came from accounts that would tell you that they have a specific purpose, so you cannot access it. It's more like $610,000 that would be available.
The remaining $165,000 restricted money, what is that dedicated to, or why is it restricted?
I'll have to look back, I didn't bring that with me.
What would be an example of a restricted account?
So for example, it could be repairs that have been scheduled, but they haven't been billed yet for whatever reason. So it's already restricted in the sense that it shows up as a surplus because it hasn't been spent, but it's already been restricted by what it's going to be spent on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions on this part?
I don't see any.
In looking at the revenue part of the report, we have been projecting towards the end of the year, and we have some more information for you than we had even last, last report for the end of December. One of those being trying to get an estimate on some of those areas where we need to collect revenue. One of them being tuitions. I realize that as we go through the year, we have better data than what was projected probably back almost this last spring, before even the end of the year you're projecting out. So I know that tuitions were projected at $995,000. Looking at what we are billing out in terms of tuitions for the last two quarters, if the same number of students remain in the programs that we tuition in to the system, we probably will be short in that account. Again, in Medicaid, we had some issues in looking at what the projections were versus the amount that was coming in, and we're working to try to close that gap. We did see a couple of areas where we're now seeing that we projected one amount and we're actually getting more. So for example, E-rate, I know we're expecting an excess over the amount that was projected for E-rate. There's some amount projected for rental income, and we have already exceeded that. So there is an opportunity to close the gap, at least to some extent, between now and June. But these are the numbers that we're projecting, so...
I mean, E-rate is a considerable percentage increase.
Yes, there were some expenses in the area of technology that qualified for reimbursement, and because of that, it comes in as a revenue on the revenue side.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on the revenue side?
I have a question.
Ms. Boland?
Just on, I noticed that the board docs have had executive contact with all the notes, and I'm reading them, and I'm just wondering, do you make them executive until after the meeting? Or is that just, you know, couldn't that be, I'm reading them and I'm not seeing anything that couldn't be public. Okay, just because I think it'd be very helpful to our newspapers too to see the work we're doing. You've got some really good notes there. And I also later wanted to say that, I had to check the number, but our demographic report reports that we have 61.5%, and I know that you've reported 60% that we have.
It's ticking up.
It's ticking up since last Friday you put it in. Okay, that's good. Because every percent is approximately 20 children. So, it's working in the right direction.
And finally, you do have the restricted funds, and give you some updated figures. As you can see, there have been more expenditures out of the grants, as you would expect as you get further into the year. One of the things that I expect we will be seeing is third quarter, fourth quarter, you will see a lot more expenditures. At the beginning of the year, you're writing the grants, you're beginning to, you know, put up contracts and to schedule the people who are gonna do the work for the grant. So you're gonna see the grants being spent a little bit more vigorously between now and the end of June. For the state, we do provide, for some of these federal grants, we provide quarterly reports, and that's when we also ask for the revenue to come back to us for those grants that have been promised to us. So, I did include in this one, the food services. I know that there were questions about that. We do always run a month or so behind because once we put in the request for reimbursement, it takes a month to get that report into the state to get the money, and then sometimes it takes another month for it to show up on Lawson when the town has to post it. So I do not see that as a deficit there. At this point, we're just tracking that the revenue has not come in yet.
So, the final two lines, it's really only two items on that last page, and the actual last line, parentheses, that's not gonna be anticipated to be a negative number? That size of a number?
The school, this is one complete fund that happens to have two lines in it. The school lunch advocate, that is not a revenue receiving line. So you will see that one continue to be a negative number. It's basically an expense line. The other line above does have both revenues and expenses. And from our tracking of the amount of money that we've requested the state to reimburse, we should be at least breaking even at this point, if not a little better.
So would that be the 01 or the...
Yeah, the 02 account is just an expense account. It has no revenue coming into it.
And that's not, that's a small number anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Carlin?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Under what line item, expenditure report-wise, under what line item would we find the cost of pension payments that the department is required to contribute to the state for our retirees and our current teachers?
Are you referring to the grants, or are you referring to the Fund 10, our general fund?
The school department is required to contribute approximately 60% of the total cost each year for retirees' pension benefits and for current schoolteachers' anticipated pension benefits. That's what I'm referring to.
All right, so you're back to the Fund 10 or the general, the general fund. So if you go to, I believe it's line 21 on the expenditure report, that whole area, 52 hundreds, those are the benefit lines, and there's a specific line for retiree benefits.
Okay.
You see it?
I do, I do indeed see that. But are we not required to contribute toward the future or toward the anticipated benefits of our current teachers?
Yes, we do.
Where is, where is that line?
I believe it's included in that line.
Okay. So now that, now I'm very clear on where the line is or which line item it is. Let me ask you if I could, have we adjusted the budget? The budget here under retirement, retiree benefits has stood at $2,450,000. Year-to-date, we've expended about 100, about $1,002,000 of that. Have we taken steps with regard to this line item to deal with the fact that we as a district, just like the other 35 districts and just like the 39 municipalities, will need to contribute more money to the pension system based on the Rhode Island Retirement Board's recommendation to the governor's office and subsequently her recommendation to the General Assembly? In other words, we have got to contribute a lot more money towards the pension benefits of our employees. Have we accounted for that in this revenue, or in this, I'm sorry, expenditure report?
I am not aware that that additional expense is supposed to come in this fiscal year. So, no, this budget I don't believe has any additional funding other than what was budgeted from last year coming into this year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlin, I move that Dr. Colley's reports be received.
Seconded.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we typically need to do, to accept it as received?
Usually you just bundle the entire reports. We accept, you usually accept the superintendent's reports as presented, and then we go through ones that you want particular, or you want me to note particular. Dr. Colley?
Well, thank you. Is that the first meet? I wasn't here the last meeting, Dr. Colley. Is this your first one? Or second one? No, I missed the first one. Well, anyway, thank you. Next would be reports from the superintendents. Enrollment reports, demographics, homeless, strategic plan update, chronic early absenteeism, truancy update, and then partnerships and collaborations.
Mr. Chair, I move that the reports be received.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I actually have discussion on 9.6. Early absent, truancy reduction initiative update.
I'm sorry, my hard copy does not have anything. Do you have a question on the backup?
Uh, do I have a question? I want to know how we're doing. We mentioned the acronym SEATRE. I just don't know, really. Like, are these people, boots on the ground, going through the schools, talking to our staff, you know, banging heads, figuring stuff out? Or is this just an oversight group with a policy that's, I believe the last time we saw it was from 2016 or 14 or 13, an old, I mean, I want to know the mechanics of this SEATRE group, and do we need to kind of move on or move forward? Or what are we doing with these guys?
So, the Newport Partners for Families, before my arrival and before you were elected to the board, to the committee, they had started an initiative with the previous administration, Chronic Early Absentee Reduction and Truancy Initiative. That's what SEATRE stands for. And they had started this initiative to study the reasons why, at that point in time, they were having challenges as far as absenteeism students attending school. So the Van Buren Foundation, through a proposal that was written by the Newport Partners for Families, contributed to research and looking into what are some of the reasons for the chronic early absenteeism and why aren't students coming to school. And not only was it happening here in Newport, it's a nationwide epidemic that's occurring. And more and more, there's research and people are looking at why students are not coming to school. For students between the, and some of the research and some of the findings for this district have found, which aligns to the national research, is that for those that are of early age, especially kindergarten grade one and grade two, parents do not fully understand at times the impact of just a few days here and there. And eventually, it rises to a number, and it becomes a behavior and pattern for some students so that by the time they get to middle school and high school, it turns into truancy and just not coming to school, and it gets worse. So, the research is showing that there has to be a lot of proactive interventions, positive reinforcement as far as trying to get people, young students, to school, and educating parents better about the impact of this. Here at Pell, last year for instance, they started sending letters home when students received their report cards or around report card time, and they actually put in the letter, "Your child has been absent X amount of days, and your child's reading level is this and should be that." And that did have an impact. That changed some of the behaviors of the parents, and students started to come to school more often. We have found a lot of times, especially at the early ages, it's, as we know, it's not the children. It's sometimes it's the struggles that are going on in the family, homelessness, multiple reasons why. It's a very complicated situation, and so we try to like peel back the layers of the onion to see how the schools can support more. I want to share again that Elizabeth Fuerte, when she came up and spoke to us, she said she realized it's not just a school, it's a community issue. And that's why she is reinstituting Equity in Education and trying to get more families involved and trying to work with us to get more students to attend school. We also have, and I think you heard Principal Vance allude to it, we have had some struggles as far as, I'll just say, when we have had and implemented the truancy courts, and those occurred, and I guess they were implemented about eight years ago, or seven years... occurred, and I guess they were implemented about eight years ago, or seven years ago. When they were implemented, we did notice that they seemed to be effective at some points, and then when we looked at the research and we looked at the data, we noticed that in some cases, it may have been the approach of the magistrate that was assigned at that point in time, or it may be just certain circumstances that were going on. So, we have had conversations about, we feel, as a school district and our staff, Mr. Vance, you kind of heard, said they'd like to see a little bit more stick and less carrot when students do come before the truancy court, and we're working with the truancy court on that. And we are hoping that those changes will help to change behaviors as well. We've also noticed, and we've noted in the research and the information that has come out of the SEATRE research and what some of the things they've tried to do, that at the end of the day, the mentoring and the adult relationship is very important, especially when they get to the middle school level and the high school level. And we not only have seen this through SEATRE, but we're also seeing it through our high school visits, when we, with the Barr Foundation and that work, the importance of having adults in the building that are caring and that children and young people can talk to. So, that's how advisory came to be. And that's, so there are different interventions. It's still a work in progress. The Van Buren Foundation and the Newport Partners for Families, and I will say, the school district, from an administrative perspective, felt we have not addressed and finished this, and we still have more to do. And it's a very frustrating, it's very frustrating, because you see people that are making genuine efforts, and you see people working really hard, making those phone calls, going out to homes, but we do need parents, and we do need families, and we do need others to get involved and understand the importance that we are now finding, and that is why school systems across the nation, as part of the ESA requirements for an indicator of high school and school districts, is now starting to measure and monitor attendance and absenteeism, because they are finding that as early as grade six, as early as grade six, the indicator of a student attending school on a regular basis is a better predictor than grade eight standardized achievement tests or grade nine grades, whether a child is going to graduate on time in high school or, in some cases, graduate at all. So, that is why that root, that we're still trying to find root causes, and we're seeing what we can put in place as a school district in order to address them, but it's a community situation as well as a school problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to bring to the committees' attention that the strategic plan chart is in there. It's color-coded. We will continue, it was something we had in the past, we're bringing that tool back to keep the committee informed on where we are in our initiatives on the strategic plan, and each month, I'll highlight something. The ILP is something, the Individualized Learning Plan for the middle school and for the high school, is something of great importance because we really do, our research is showing us not only to get kids, students, to come to school, but also to get students to understand the importance of the education and learning, that we need to focus in on what the interests are of our students, and that's why the individualized learning plans, the ILP, that the strategic plan has put in place is so important and critical for us moving forward with our students and families. It keeps the families informed of what their children are interested in and what their hopes and aspirations are going forward.
I have a question about the strategic plan. I noticed that, I was looking for, when we got this information, on the reading and math, I know that the STAR testing is what we're going to base it on. Is it possible to get updates on the STAR testing after each time?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we don't see at the end, we didn't make it, but we'll see, like, as it's going on, how we're doing.
Absolutely. Elementary, I do have. I'm waiting for the middle school and high school. And the high school had a delay in their STAR assessments.
Okay, so that'd be great if we could get that next time after, so we can just watch that and keep an eye on it.
I agree.
Ms. Jim?
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah. Superintendent Jermaine referenced also, I think, part of the report was the mentoring of the students, and I've said this probably at least twice a year now, how important it is for some of our young people to have an adult with whom they can really connect, and, you know, all the efforts that are being made with faculty doing this. But the mentoring program, that you're meeting one-on-one with the youngster, and I, my experience with one young lady now who's a junior at Rogers, and I've been her mentor since she was in second grade, and I can just, I mean, our conversations are like two adults talking, so this is, it's just wonderful, I can't say enough about it. But I would encourage people to, not to be, don't be afraid of working with the kids who are beyond elementary age, because my experience was dealing with elementary kids and teaching, but it is so rewarding, really, on both sides, and we learn a lot about each other. So, I think any people who may be watching, who are really, might be moved to, say, start meeting up with a young fellow or a young girl, and even those who are in middle and in high school, I'll be more than happy to send you in the right direction for this.
Thank you.
The only other report I just would like to just bring to your attention is from our Director of Technology. So, you can see what's going on in technology and the updates and what's going on as far as security cameras and everything else.
Right. I'm just looking at that, thanks. Motion was made to accept them as reported and seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. Bring us up to suggested meeting dates and agenda items. The meeting dates we have currently before us are tomorrow at 10 o'clock, Wellness Subcommittee at Pell, at 10 o'clock in the morning. February 28th at 5 o'clock in the evening, Finance Advisory Subcommittee in the Career Tech, room 924. March 5th would be 5:30 in the evening, Parent Advisory Council Meeting, and that'll be here at Pell Elementary School Library. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting is March 13th at 6:30 PM, right here in the Pell Elementary School Cafeteria. It actually starts with a pre-meeting at 6:15, which is over in the conference room right off of the principal's office, and that, too, is open to the public. I believe that's all the...
I have a suggestion.
Ms. Bolan?
A suggestion. I'd like to add security on to our next agenda, so we can have a discussion on, you know, what security things we put in at the schools and what's being considered, just to keep parents updated.
And then I would suggest that there'd be a meeting. I think there's some collaboration with at least a Middletown Town Council person who approached me to talk about training, bringing in an expert who was willing to give their services for free at the Rogers High School auditorium. This is a potential item that's up for discussion just after the recent incidents down in Florida. They reached out and said that they would like to do, like, an Aquinic Island, so if you might want to reach out, and I'll give you the names of the individuals who reached out to me, just to try to coordinate that over the next month or so. It was for staff, the public, the local police, law enforcement, and everybody else as far as things of that nature.
That's great, thank you.
And I'll be sending out some information I've gathered about security measures that can be taken in the classroom, and I've got some good information on that.
Don't believe we need executive session, do we?
No, so, Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
This is motion, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is, thanks for sticking it out to our...
Thank you.
New sources, thank you, and thanks for all here to watch.